So, okay, so this motion has been dead and we're gonna move on to 58B for homeless.
Under Vice Chair Doe, Supervisor Spitzer, to address the needs of the encamped homeless population, waive all applicable requirements of contract policy manual, authorize county executive officer to enter into no more than three sole source contracts with service providers for services to encamped homeless, homeless population for triage operations, intensive case management, links to housing and workforce development not to exceed 12 month term, direct county executive office to develop with sheriff coroner a plan to ensure continuous law enforcement presence in, in surrounding homeless encampments, direct county executive officer to provide the board with report in 30 days concerning service providers selected and metrics and make related findings.
Okay, this item's been agendized by Supervisor Doe and Supervisor Spitzer, so whoever wants to lead, okay?
Great, thank you, Madam Chair, um, thank you Supervisor Spitzer for letting me start this item for us, um, ladies and gentlemen, since the beginning of this year in less than six months, we have received hundreds of public comments here in our meetings, specifically on homelessness and in particular the Santa Ana Riverbed. This does not include the other hundreds of phone calls, letters and emails directed to our individual offices here on the fifth floor. We know that homelessness in Orange County has grown since 2015 and we know that from our point in time count, uh, that was the report that was released last month. Homelessness in this county is the same as it is across the US, has reached a crisis point. Hardly a week goes by without a major city sharing their lack of progress on this issue despite having spent hundreds of millions and sometimes billions of taxpayers' dollars. As I put up on the screen, San Francisco spends, just in the Tenderloin area, a quarter of billion dollars a year and citywide a billion dollars a year with no significant improvement. And Los Angeles in 2016 alone spent almost 150 million dollars, only to see the number of homeless increase by 23%. However, we must not lose hope. We, as a county, must address this issue in an effective and collaborative way. We must make it a priority because it is the right thing to do and you know from the actions that we have taken as a board in the last year, it is a priority for us. Nevertheless, saying that addressing homelessness is the right thing to do is not the same as knowing which right thing to do, which thing we should do as a county. But I know what is not right for us as a board to do is exactly what many in the public want us to do, which is to just allocate money, create programs without a big plan, without a comprehensive plan, without any way to ensure that we will get the results that we want. Good government doesn't follow a promise that if you just give us the money, we will provide you the solution. I don't think that's the way good government is. No, good governance requires that we have a plan, be sure that we have buy-in from stakeholders, which is the cities and our community, have built-in performance metrics before we start spending the public's money. And that's what we've been doing. You have been seeing a lot of soul-searching, a lot of ideas, a lot of proposals from this board and we've been working hard to provide possible solutions. And after hearing some of those thoughts and proposals, a homeless ad hoc committee was formed, consisted of Supervisor Spitzer and myself. And together, we are putting forth a pilot program. And this program is designed to position the county as the lead in providing the continuum of care services that is, that are needed to assist our needy citizens out of homelessness, while at the same time balancing city engagement and public safety. But we also want to pay appropriate recognition that in some of these homeless encampments, that some people just simply have nowhere else to go. We recognize the human aspect of homelessness, but at the same time, we have an obligation and a responsibility to fulfill as a board of supervisors. So our pilot program that we are talking about today is another step towards a more comprehensive plan to end homelessness in Orange County. After our work at the courtyard here in Santa Ana and the bridges at Kramer Lane, we have identified as a board, I believe, that the solution to homelessness require a multi-phase approach. And these phases include triage operations, which include meeting basic bodily needs and emergency shelters. And I want, I pause on that point because that's gonna be the thing that will require probably the most discussion and the most clarity on. And then the next phase is intensive case management with wraparound services. Third is workforce training and development and then last but not least, links to housing, both transitional and permanent supportive housing. And I want to make it clear, as we talk about permanent housing, because that has been thrown around a lot, most housing issues do not rest with us on the board of supervisors. Those issues rest with the cities because where we put the affordable housing, supportive housing, or even transitional housing, treatment centers, all of those things require permits, zoning and such from cities. And there's only so much land that the county has control over. And so necessarily, any discussion of a solution to homelessness has to include our partners, both the cities and also the nonprofit organizations and our community. And so I believe that the time is clear that we must act now. And why do we need to act? If, if we do not take action, this crisis, especially the encampments, will pose dangerous risk to public safety, public health and the environment. The area that we have been focusing on the most, which is the Santa Ana Riverbed, if the human refuse that I'm sure that exists at those encampments contaminate the riverbed and ultimately the ocean, we will face significant fines at the state and federal level for creating a toxic environment. Or it takes it the next big storm, a 20, 30-year storm to come, wash all that down our flood channel, it'll go out to the ocean and that's when we will face that jeopardy. The riverbed is not a safe place for human habitation. We must identify locations where basic human needs can be met in a humane manner. But at the same time, law and order must be maintained. Right now, what concerns me is we have allowed to exist an environment that where there's really no law and order, there is no law enforcement presence. And so it is prime for, for major criminal incidents to happen. Just in, a few weeks ago, there was a fire that was self-started at one of the encampments. That fire engulfed a tree, which could have easily spread to nearby residential homes. We have a homeless resident whose foot was run over by a service truck that was trying to maneuver around the encampment to go down the flood control channel. We have well-intentioned volunteers who, who feel empowered now to drive onto the riverbed to do their volunteer work. And then we heard about a young woman OD'd in her tent. As a former deputy district attorney, I asked myself, do we need to have a major incident or a crime happening in the encampments where lives are lost? Again, because we have no law enforcement presence out there, before we should take action? I do not believe that's the prudent thing to do. And so the pilot program that we are proposing is meant to, to, to do both, to be strategic in the sense that we want to address the concerns that we have as a county, but we also understand it has to be flexible enough so that we can learn as we go along. Because I don't believe anybody can say that they have a definitive plan that is gonna say that I can guarantee success. We know that from other cities around the country. And so with that, um, I'm going to make my motion, which will have recommended actions that are different from the ASR. So Madam Chair, and Supervisor Spitzer, if you don't mind, let me state what the amended action are. To direct the CEO to enter into a sole source contract that will include subcontractors to deliver services outlined in the ASR with an amount not to exceed $750,000 for a period of six months, from July 1st 17 to January 1st 18. Now, why do we shorten the time from our proposal? It is for the second item, action is to, for the CEO to provide a board with a report on a quarterly basis, the results of the services that we provide. And then to develop, at that time, bringing back to the board after six months, your plan for a longer-term, if not permanent, solution to the encampments, homeless encampments that we have in the county. Third is to direct the CEO to engage with cities and to work to identify areas to meet basic needs that are accessible to the homeless population. Third is to direct the CEO to develop a public safety plan along the riverbed with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and to include any resources that you may need in order to maintain public safety and to include the expenses for that plan in the 17, 18 budget. And the CEO will also provide the board with, in your plan, in the permanent plan that you will propose beginning of 2018, metrics that the county can use to monitor our performance in helping our homeless population transition permanently out of homelessness, as well as to help them find supportive housing ultimately. Okay, so that will be my proposal.
Super, okay Supervisor Doe, can I just add a few more there that, I really appreciate that Supervisor Spitzer and Vice Chair Doe brought this item today because this is an emergency item that, you know, we really have to help. So I'm glad that you are doing six-month pilot program, but can we add that within three months period, that, you know, we want to see initial report that what's going on from the staff, that what's happening and the kind of like, you know, review and what happened? And then second thing is, let's make sure that work with the cities, Orange and Anaheim, because Supervisor Nelson already talked to City of Anaheim, they already have funding and a lot of cities that have funding, so that $750,000 has to be including the city fundings too, so we're gonna give direction to the staff that work with the cities and getting funding, so it doesn't have to be that only coming out from the county because this is the city matters too, so we're gonna work together, is that okay?
Yeah, I can speak to that if I have your permission.
Okay.
So some of the organizations that are in this business, they have monies that they can then leverage the city money. So not only are we in conversation with the city manager of Anaheim and Mr. Otto from Orange, because Supervisor Nelson and I split the city of Anaheim, and then I have the entire city of Orange, they're, they have the ability to leverage other dollars that they build, bring to the table. So it's really gonna be a consortium of dollars. So to your point, Madam Chair, is that the idea by going out with these sole source contracts with organizations that are in the business of delivering these services, they have monies that they raise through their nonprofits and then they also either match that or leverage those dollars with the local jurisdictions. And a lot of, so Anaheim, I've already talked to their city council members, just like they did in the partnership on Kramer, and I think, Mr. Kim, you're talking to Mr. Otto in the city of Orange of the same, of the same thing. So that, that's my response to that. The one thing I do want to, well, and then I'd like to speak, but I'll wait until it's my turn.
Yes, can I just add one more, that one provider as a coordinator and two subcontractors under that coordinator, I think it's gonna be much easier step to work with one provider. I think that's what you mentioned, one of the motion, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Just so, let me clarify, Madam Chair, my initial motion did include a quarterly report back to this board, so.
And then one provider as a coordinator and two subcontractors.
Well, I, I don't think we should tie the CEO's hand by, by identifying the number of subcontractors. Let's just say that we will authorize the CEO to enter into a sole source contract as a general contractor and then any subcontractor they may feel they need to utilize to fully implement the plan.
CEO Kim?
Thank you, Chairman. As staff, we're very excited about an opportunity to go out and directly serve this population. I think what I would ask for from the board is the flexibility, not only to work with our neighboring city jurisdictions, but also some flexibility in terms of how we develop the scope and timing of this contract because those discussions haven't occurred yet since I hadn't had this direction presumably from the board that we will receive today. So my commitment is to work very quickly, try to engage those cities, try to deploy as many of the services as we know that we'll need as possible, but timeframes may be varied because it takes time for contractors to spin up, hire, retain staff, et cetera. So we will work on that and I promise to come back and brief each of you in terms of how we're proceeding, but we're excited to start.
Okay, can we have Supervisor Bartlett speaks and then Doe and then Supervisor Spitzer can close it, is that okay? Okay Supervisor Bartlett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that staff has been working on this item for, for quite a while and I thank Supervisors Doe and Spitzer for bringing this to our attention today on the agenda. I just want to ensure that with the $750,000 that, that will be in addition to the, the dollars that will be provided by the cities of Anaheim and the cities of Orange, is that correct?
So, I can't make a commitment on behalf of cities in terms of what they would provide, but I think from my perspective, we need a number of things. Not only do we need financial support, but we also need support in terms of access to potentially space. And both cities of Orange and Anaheim have very active homeless service programs and we'll have to engage them to understand how this, these services will interact and supplement and work collaboratively with the various programs that they have that are ongoing. So I couldn't tell you exactly what it would look like today since I haven't had those conversations in, in any depth, but I will certainly be excited to engage.
Okay, I'm happy to get the funds allocated. I just want to make sure that we have a coordinated effort moving forward. I know we're trying to put things together very quickly. It's important for Susan Price, our Director of Care Coordination, to be integrally involved in this process, you know, as she has been regarding the homeless issues. Susan is in charge of working with the, the various cities in Orange County, our 34 cities and the three service planning areas that we have for homelessness in Orange County. She's working with the cities and the officials with regard to identifying the SB2 zones so that we can work on zoning for specific areas relating to homelessness and, and permanent supportive housing. To really get a handle and solve this issue, we need to get more permanent supportive housing so that we can continue to move things forward. Otherwise, without the housing at the end of the day, we're going to have high amounts of recidivism and that's gonna be a vicious circle that we don't want to get into. So what I'd like to do is offer a friendly amendment to Supervisor Doe's motion that since housing remains an important and critical need, I'd like to take this opportunity to direct the healthcare agency to allocate $5 million of the Mental Health Safety Act dollars specifically towards housing, which is a critical component to solving homelessness. So Supervisor Doe, would you take that under consideration, please?
Of course, I'm supportive of increasing our housing stock for affordable housing in the county, but as far as the exact amount, that's kind of specific. Do we have that kind of funding and do we have limitations on the use of such funding? Mr.?
Richard.
Richard Sanchez.
Richard Sanchez, Healthcare Agency. I did get a heads up that this might be coming and I've been speaking with Mary Hale, our Behavioral Health Director, this, this is possible.
It is.
That dollar amount is possible.
Then of course.
And that's the appropriate pot to take it from because that's the MHSA dollar fund that we can pull from and that's the appropriate fund for the, the homeless housing. We have different pots of money for housing, but this is the most appropriate where we have a significant amount of dollars to, to pull from.
Sure. Of course, the, the, how we administer the fund would be something that you have to come back to the board on, right?
Absolutely, and we will be bringing the MHSA plan in a couple of weeks, actually.
Sure, yes.
Thank you for waiting for a long time Supervisor Spitzer.
I have a question on that before I make.
Okay.
Was it my turn or was Supervisor Bartlett done?
Doe, you want to finish it?
I've been stepping on all day.
Everybody's stepping on, stepping on.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Sanchez, I have a question for you. I've been talking to Mary Hale for a long time about a detox center in this county and other things that we've seen in San Antonio. I mean, we went to other jurisdictions to look at best practices to deal with this.
Absolutely.
So this conversation's expanded a little bit from the riverbed. In the budget, are you coming back with the, with an assessment of all the funds that you have available through whether your agency or social services and other? In other words, why aren't we doing that, that blending or that analysis of all the various sources that we have available to take on this issue? Because for that to come here and then you to step up and say, I got a heads up and we could do it, that's kind of an odd way to tell us that you have resources. That should have been and should be an ongoing global discussion about the, the complete spectrum of resources, funding and others, grant opportunities and like that we have and the ability to quote-unquote leverage other dollars. So isn't that, isn't that part of the 10-year plan, Mr.? Well, Mr. Kim, you look like you want. I mean, this shouldn't come up ad hoc like that. It should be part of a comprehensive set of recommendations to the board.
Certainly, and to the extent that we get questions that are specific from the board, we obviously provide that information. But in terms of how we manage our global set of programs that serve the homeless or needy population, that is incorporated into our financial plan. And in the financial plans that healthcare agency has developed, we do have carved out money for a facility such as what you just raised as a topic. So that's been something that's been on our radar and to the extent that we have opportunities to exercise those types of opportunities, we are prepared and able to consider that. If I can make a comment on the earlier discussion about using MHSs money, we have to be very careful, there are restrictions on that. So to the extent that we're housing people that have, that suffer from mental illness, that link has to be there in order for us to utilize that funding. So again, we're treating a subset of the population that is out in the flood channel and in other areas in Orange County, but that really speaks to the fact that we need multiple tools because there are multiple reasons for why people are in the condition that they're in with respect to homelessness.
So with respect to that, $5 million, I had a commitment from Behavioral Health that they were looking at crisis beds at a different location. In fact, my understanding's in the budget, right? Potential locations and these crisis beds.
It will not affect those other discussions, so we can do multiple things at the same time and we're prepared to do so.
All right, I just want to make sure in this one little, you know, aside, we didn't somehow block all this work I've been doing the last year with healthcare for crisis beds.
No, we wouldn't do that. In fact, we've had a number of questions from different media sources about how we spend money that serve homelessness and in fact, I gave a directive and we'll be providing information and we'll have posted on our website that indicate all of the various programs that we have that provide services, as well as the direct homeless funding components. And we'll provide that, it'll be up before our budget hearings and we're prepared to, you know, respond to any questions that we get from either the board or any of our stakeholders.
All right, so that was just my follow-up on that. Should I, was it Supervisor Doe then me or make my comment, when should I make my generic comments?
Can I just, I just tag in real quick because it follows what you just said. The point that, or the question that Supervisor Spitzer posed illustrate very clearly the limitation that we have as a county on what we can do. We as a board have allocated money for the crisis centers, the crisis stabilization unit, how long now? Almost a year? And guess what? How many new locations have come online? Zero. Why? Because we can't get approval from the cities. So therefore, the, the point that Supervisor Spitzer raised is a, is a legitimate one. And that's, and when we discuss what the county should do and can do, please, let's keep this in mind that no matter what our intentions are and what our actions are, we need our partners to go along with us. And I do have some other comments on, on the cities, but I want, I don't want to take up Supervisor Spitzer's time. If you need to, go ahead, but I do want to follow up on what the CEO mentioned earlier.
So I want to thank Supervisor Doe and his staff for all their hard work and thank my staff for all their hard work and the other agencies that helped put all this together. So Andrew, I want to thank you for your leadership. Just a couple of things. If you go through downtown Los Angeles, whether recently or 40 years ago, Skid Row has been Skid Row for 50 years. When I was a high school teacher in 1984, across the river at Fourth and Soto at Roosevelt High, I actually went to Skid Row and brought a speaker who lived on Skid Row to my class in East LA to share his situation with my students. And, and you could drive through there today and it's as bad, if not worse, than it's ever been. We cannot allow the riverbed to become Orange County's Skid Row and we are moving in that direction. It is not a place that, that people should be habitating. It is a riverbed. During the rainy season, violent amounts of water ran through that area. People were living down in that channel and they had a retreat to safety, but we could have had some serious injuries or death there. That is not a place for people to live, number one, and we also have a bike trail there and it's, it is open to the public to use that for recreation. So to me, this is, the overarching issue here is to get to the point where that area is closed permanently and it goes back to being what its intended purpose was. It is a channel that carries water from various areas in the, in the county and Southern California, the mountains to the ocean. So that's number one. But number two, we have to treat people humanely and I, it sounds like we all are in agreement. I agree with the speakers, those people are there, they're living there, but it doesn't mean we're blind to the fact that that can be an ongoing practice. But while it is occurring and until we come up with transitional options, we've got to treat these people as human beings. They are human beings. And today, I will argue, I do not believe we're being humane about it and we're gonna get criticized. There's a lot of chatter all over with people who are very critical of me in terms of wanting to provide basic human services for people while we're in this interim period. So what I'm trying to explain and I'm gonna take the opportunity here is, that is for a limited finite period of time. And Mr. Kim, when you come back to us and give our reports from whoever ends up getting this contractual work, they have to have a very certain timeline when those individuals will be out of that riverbed. And Mr. County Counsel, I would say, because we had the lawsuits and everything else, we need the legal analysis concurrently with how we're going to work with Judge Carter and others who have jurisdiction about how we're gonna work on the transition plan to close the riverbed. So I want to make sure we're doing it concurrently because I don't want anybody to think that we're bringing all this to the table with the understanding that that's gonna be a permanent encampment. It cannot be a permanent encampment, not when we have the courtyard and not when we have Kramer and not when I'm hearing Mr. Sanchez and others saying, we're gonna bring more beds online. That's where people are gonna live. And that's the assurance I have from some of the providers that they can transition those people and I'm gonna hold them accountable to that. We're going to close the riverbed. I can't say today when, but we have to have a timeframe, Mr. Kim, and we need to know that in the next 90 days. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Before we take the vote, Madam Chair, I just, I just want to assist the CEO in, in pleading to the cities. I kept my motion. pleading to the cities. I kept my motion broad and generic, saying cities without identifying which ones, because I don't want to think that the, the public to think that we're just focusing on Orange and Anaheim, or just that part of the riverbed. We have hotspots all along the riverbed in different cities, different parts of the county. And so my motion is meant, again, this is the first step, we can start there, but this is meant for you to engage all cities that may be affected by it. And secondly, engaging the city is more than just asking for funding. I am asking the cities, if they hear my comments, to understand that we need help in terms of identifying space, providing the appropriate permits, and public safety support to make this initiative work. That's what we need, in addition to funding if they can do it. So this is a collaborative effort. This must be a county-wide effort. It isn't just the county and some nonprofit. It has to be the communities, the neighborhoods, the cities, and agencies, public safety and otherwise, working with us in order to accomplish this common goal. So if the motions are clear enough for you, Mr. CEO, then I'll move ahead. If not, please let me know anything else we need to clarify for you, to give you enough information and direction in order to proceed.
They're clear enough, sir.
Thank you.
I entertain the motion.
I move for the recommended action items that I stated earlier.
No objections. This item passes. Okay, that brings us to the closed session. I'll talk to you, please.